Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have Marcy to call the roll, please.
I'm Herbert Dolderlas.
Here.
Maryka.
Here.
Norca.
Here.
Stinkstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Present.
And Mayor Moss.
Here. Well, tonight for the invocation, we have Pastor Tom Vanderflug from Fellowship of First Free Form Church. Well, for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and we're going to follow that with a multiple agency. Welcome.
Good evening. You're invited to join me in prayer. Almighty God, we come to you tonight, and we thank you for the places that you give us to live. God, we thank you for those in our city of Granville here who teach our children in our schools, who provide support and aid for that, and administrators. We thank you for those within our community who care for our parks. We thank you for those who drive snowplows and keep our roads safe. We thank you for those who are first responders and who care for those who live here. God, we pray that you would guide those on the city council here tonight, that you give them wisdom to be good stewards of the resources that you have entrusted to us, and we pray that you may motivate them, as all of us, to seek the common good of your people here, that all who live and work in the city of Granville may know the blessings that come to us through you. We thank you for that. I pray this in the name of Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us tonight, Pastor. I was thinking, God, another invitation itself. Have a good evening. Yeah, before you be attended for tonight's meeting, council, is there motion to approve the attendance? So, move for ordinance and support in the discussion. All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
The opposite, please say no. Yeah, the minutes for our last meeting, January 8th, you've had a chance to take a look at those. Is there motion to approve those minutes? So, move.
For.
Motion and support. Any additional corrections? Now, that's important. For now, all those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposite, please say no. Okay, presentation of bills tonight in an amount of about $460,000. Ken, anything you'd like to point out before we open up the questions?
Just a couple of items from here. Noticed on page four, a bill for, two bills actually, for grant of the trailer, if the string electric, those related to signal maintenance in the fourth quarter of the last calendar year, and also for installation of updated traffic control loops at a couple intersections. That was about $34,000. The largest bill, Franklin Holberta, on page five, the Clean Water Plant Irrigation Project, that's the six progress pay application, and that represents now approaching 60% completion on that project. Of the total tonight, only about 17% of it was general fund, so it was heavily concentrated into other areas, with Clean Water Plant being the primary one, the 43% of the total. But really didn't notice anything too out of the ordinary there, or, you know, single annual type invoices we usually try to point out, so we have been answering questions on other items that I didn't bring out.
Questions for Ken about any bills tonight? If not, is there motion to approve the bill tonight in an amount of $460,966.86?
Motion, support.
Motion, support. Any other comments, questions? Now, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Council, Maryka.
Yes.
Norca.
Yes.
Stinkstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Dolderlas.
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Time for public comment. See, we have a few guests tonight. Any public comment, please just come up to the podium, give us your name, address, and also what you're thinking about this evening. Mitch, welcome.
Sure.
Why not?
Good evening and a happy new year. Mitch Leachman, 3963 Vassal Drive. I actually intended to come a couple weeks ago, but there was something else going on on the eighth. Oh, that's right, my alma mater was winning the national championship. So, I just want to say thanks. I have like two and a half points to make. One, and the mayor, I don't remember what meeting it was, I guess it was the end of the year, very wonderful series of comments thanking elected leaders, thanking city staff, thanking the behind-the-scenes staff, right? All of those that we don't see, that we don't know about. I've been here just about a year in the city, and I've lived in bigger places. I've lived in the East Coast. I grew up on the east side of Michigan. I've been to a number of different places, but this is just a really cool place to live. And I mean that in West Michigan, I mean that Kent County, and I mean here in Granville. And it's become perfectly clear that a big part of what makes my wife and I feel welcomed and comfortable here are all these people. All of you, the staff, again, everybody who makes things work here in Granville. So, you know, New Year, January, you know, perfect time to say thanks, so I wanted to say that. Related is to say thanks to Ken, who I understand has quite a history here in the city, brought back here temporarily, but I specifically want to highlight the fact that you speak at every council meeting, that you have things to say, and that you share information that you believe is important regarding whether it's presentation of bills or other subjects. And I sat in on just enough meetings over the last year with Dennis, the city manager, and I'm sure he was very good in many ways, but I found him surprisingly quiet during these council meetings. And so I share that, one, as accolades to Ken, but two, to all of you, that as you're in your process of selecting a new city manager, that I urge you all to demand Ken's level of commentary here during the council meetings. So, I think it's really important to the public to be hearing from the city manager and hearing some of those comments and some of that emphasis. A last comment I would make, totally unrelated to all of those, you all, I think, are aware, I'm part of the Environmental Sustainability Committee, and we have been working with Charlie and Public Works, and we have a work day scheduled for February 10th, Saturday, February 10th. It is public, it is posted, and I believe it's been posted to the city's Facebook page, if not, I'm sure it will be, but it's out there, it's for volunteers, it starts at nine in the morning, and it's our first opportunity to very aggressively pursue natural areas restoration inside Mill Race Park. We, you could say we started that with the garlic mustard this past May, but in this case, in February, with the assistance and the expert professional support from the Kent Conservation District, we're going to be attacking the woody invasive plants inside Mill Race Park. So, again, February 10th, Saturday, I'm a winter lover, I'm kind of not looking forward to the warm-up and temperatures and all the snow melting, and yet, it'd be really great if we did have less snow for February 10th project, so, thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all you do for the city as well.
Can I ask you one question, Mitch? So, is there something strategic about doing that type of invasive plant project in the winter when there's no foliage on the leaves, does that kind of the idea?
Yeah, when it comes to chemically treating the plants, and they will be treated with tiny little daubers, also under the supervision of Kent Conservation District, an ideal time of year for the chemical to be absorbed into the roots of the plants and effectively kill them is in the winter, when they're dormant and they're, they're not pushing fluids up from their roots, but they're very happily going to suck fluids down into the roots.
Okay, great. Thank you. Give us some good reason.
Anybody else? Other comment? Last chance? Okay, next item is under Council Communications repetitions, and it's a report from our traffic engineer about the Prairie-Wilson intersection. We've had a memo, and we also have a presentation. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all for the opportunity to share with you tonight. My name is Chris Zoll. I am a traffic engineer with Progressive P.D. I'd like to commend you for taking up the additional review and study for this unfortunate crash that occurred. You have a presentation to walk through, but thought I might share a little bit more about my experience first as well. I've been with Progressive for the past five years, leading our transportation group. Prior to that, I used to work for the city of Grand Rapids. Spent 15 years working in the traffic safety department for the city, owning and operating the roads throughout the entire 45 square miles, as well as maintaining the signal system for most of the region. It's unfortunate that we have, we have to have these conversations, but it's a part of my experience and job that I've been doing for 20 years and more. So, Marcy is going to help me kind of move through the slides. I couldn't get my technology plugged in quite right tonight, so Marcy, thank you for the assistance. So, I'd like to first start with a moment of silence for the loss of Mr. Mickey Lee. Thank you for your patience and peace with that. So, as a part of the study, we went out and did some analysis and review of the intersection. I have some statistics to share with you, both nationally, oh, yeah, there we go. We have some existing conditions to talk through, show you the data, the data collection and analysis that we've performed, and then some potential improvements for the intersection So, as a part of the statistics, looking at what's nationally occurring and how crash data works, the most current data is only available to us on the annual cycle, so we get a year's worth of data for analysis. So, 2018 to 2022, these are the national statistics on data. This comes from the Governor's Highway Safety Association. 7,500 pedestrians were killed in traffic crashes in 2022. It's across the country, that's more than 20 a day. This is the most pedestrian deaths since 1981. We are seeing more and more crashes on the roadways, and 2023 would continue to show us that increase in volume or increase in crashes as well, and pedestrian deaths are increasing faster than all other traffic fatalities. So, it's unfortunate, this is a national trend, we're seeing that same issue with cycling crashes as well, more and more cycling crashes. All right, so let's go from the national to the state of Michigan. There were 1,123 traffic fatalities in Michigan during 2022, which is just slightly fewer than 2021. However, the number of crashes did increase by approximately 10,000 crashes in 2022. Michigan bicycle fatalities increased from 29 to 36, which is up about 24%. And the pedestrian fatalities in that same period of time is actually down 5% for the entire state of Michigan. Some of the causes that are cited can be tracked back to risky driving behaviors, distracted or impaired and reckless driving, as well as traveling at excessive speeds. Those are some of the major trends. We've also had changes legislation as it relates to the use of cannabis, which I think is also influencing crashes and fatalities. All right, so moving to the existing conditions analysis. Wilson Avenue carries approximately 12,000 vehicles a day, speed limit 25 miles an hour, two travel lanes in each direction, and at the major intersections, there are left turn lanes. Prairie Street, near east-west, carries about 7,500 vehicles a day, again, 25 miles an hour, one travel lane in each direction with a center continuous turn lane. Currently, the intersection is controlled by a diagonal span, so this is two poles with the two signal heads that hang over the intersection, that control all four directions from a diagonal span with two phases of operation, north-south and east-west. It's currently how it operates. The left turns operate currently as a permissive homely phase, so when it's clear, you're allowed to go, there's no dedicated arrow for the detected place. So, in September, we had come out and collected some turning movement counts. We set our equipment up next to the side of the road, set our cameras out, collected some video, observed vehicles and pedestrians. We found that the AM peak hour was from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, and the PM peak hour is 4:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. And on the right here, you can see some of the images of the approaches for northbound and eastbound, sort of the two legs primarily in question. So, we processed all that data, and it comes up looking like this, where you see the turning movement counts for that particular hour. The one without the parentheses is the AM, the one with the parentheses is the PM, and behind them, you see the letters, those are describing the level of service. So, I'm sure we've talked about this in the past, level of service A, being no delay, F being significant delay, and F2 being California. Generally, for an urban area, the level of service D is considered to be acceptable. Right, so these are the pedestrian volumes right next to it. During the vehicle peak hours, you see a very significant volume in the morning, I believe it's with school kids headed to school. It's the afternoon peak hour is much later than the school let-out, so hence, we don't see those school kids represented here, but if we were to observe the pedestrian volumes during the let-out of the school, it would show up here likely at a very similar level. Makes sense? Okay. All right, moving to crash history. Again, crashes from the dataset that we have access to are done based on a year. I checked again today to see if 2023 data is available. It's not, usually takes several months past the end of the year to become available. So, this is the information as an aggregate for the entire year of 2022, all the way through 2018, so five years' worth of crash data. So, in the past five years, 2022 went back, there were 26 crashes at the intersection, 19 of them were considered property damage only, there were five that were possible injuries, that's what we call a C crash, there was one suspected minor injury, and one serious injury, incapacitating injury. Then, of course, we have the crash that occurred this past July that is a fatality, so that will show up in the 2023 data. All right, so moving on to talk about level of service. So, we have modeled the existing traffic volumes to understand how the intersection movements are currently operating. In this chart, the AM peak hour is on the left, the PM peak hour is on the right, so for each movement and the overall intersection delay, so for example, the existing conditions in the morning has an overall level of service B, operating at 18.6 seconds per vehicle of delay. Then it goes through each of the movements for the intersection with its corresponding level of service, and for the most part, the existing conditions, A, B, and C in the morning, B, Cs, and 1D in the afternoon peak hour. As a part of this process, we were asked to evaluate what would be the operational impacts of adding dedicated left turn phasing, so this would be that arrow, that specific green arrow. So, that is what is shown here as the mitigated condition. So, again, levels of service for the morning do get worse, but are still within the reasonable or acceptable range for an urban context. And then the mitigated conditions at the PM peak hour, again, also a little bit worse with 1E for the westbound left turn, but again, overall, still reasonable for an urban condition. Making sense so far? All right, so in addition to the operational or delay-based calculations, we also looked at the queue, so the length of the storage for the vehicles for both the existing conditions, which are shown again on a column on the left, and then the column just to the right of it with the implemented phasing for that left turn phase, you can see that in most cases, you end up with a larger queue. But all in all, you know, a vehicle's approximately 25 feet long, give or take, so you can see that our queues in certain areas are increasing nominally, so that southbound through in the PM peak is increasing by approximately one vehicle, but in the morning peak, you know, it's increasing by approximately six vehicles, right? Overall, the queuing and space available, we believe is reasonable without blocking the, well, it already blocks the emergency response access on the west leg. That's an existing condition, so that eastbound through movement, increasing in the morning by 10 feet, is really negligible, and increasing by nine feet in the PM again, so it's operating at that length of queue basically already today. Okay? So, what are some of the things that we can consider, what can we do? It's important to recognize that mitigating every crash is not possible. We are, as a country, working very diligently towards zero deaths. This is a statement that you'll hear by the feds, it's echoed by the state of Michigan, a lot of local communities have adopted their own vision, zero goals and objectives around safety. This is the idea that zero is the right number. Zero fatalities is what we're striving to achieve in the motorized industry. It's going to take a lot of work to get there, there's significant programs that involve education, infrastructure, enforcement, there's quite a bit that goes into it. Recognizing that human behavior is a very significant part of many crashes, it's going to be very difficult for us to get to zero, but we're working towards that. So, I commend you for recognizing this crash and having the community conversation about what's possible, but also recognizing that we just aren't going to be able to throw money and solve all the problems, right? The conditions that exist, I mean, if, there are so many different circumstances where the driver's behavior is unmitigatable, you know, if they were to have a heart attack and run off the road, you know, there's not much that we can do to prevent it, that condition. All right, so, one of the things that we do recognize is this traffic signal hasn't been updated to the modern standard. The modern is to use a box span configuration, so what we talked about earlier, the diagonal span with two poles, a box span configuration is with four poles, and this, what this does is this pushes the signal heads to the far side of each approach, which gives everybody a little bit more time to react, see the traffic signal, and we've seen as a trend fewer red light runners as a result of that. So, some of the trend is, is that as a vehicle passes outside of the cone of vision for the traffic signal, that might be yellow, might be red, and they scoot through the intersection feeling as if they're, you know, sight out of mind or that they're safe, the box span configuration shows, you know, the entire way through the intersection, nope, you entered on red, it's still red, yep, you shouldn't have done that. So, that's one of the safety benefits that comes with a box span intersection. So, we also talked about implementing the north-south dedicated left turn phasing, showed you the operational impacts as a result of that, the signal could be retrofitted to accommodate for that phasing. Another option would be the consideration of no turn on red signs. This could also come with an optional plaque of either time restrictions or specifically when pedestrians are present. The city of Grand Rapids uses some no turn on red signs in urban areas where they expect pedestrians pretty routinely, a lot of the downtown area, assign no turn on red, and that is a reasonable consideration for improvement here as well. We also analyzed the current clearance intervals, so this is the yellow and all red sign for both east-west and north-south phases, and found that it doesn't currently meet the M. dot standard, and probably worth having a conversation with the city of Grand Rapids on how it's currently programmed and how it's sequenced with the Granville intersection to make sure the clearance intervals are up to date with the standard practices for the region and for the DOT. We could also look at updating the crosswalk markings to high-visibility roadway markings, this would be the continental crosswalks, so out there right now, or the parallel bars. You could implement something that are the thick and wide bars to help bring some of that contrast to the pedestrian space. And then, in the image I'm showing here on the bottom, we could also potentially look at narrowing the eastbound through and right lane on Prairie. Currently, there's enough space to get two cars side by side so that somebody could make a right turn, or at least the first couple of vehicles might be able to sneak around, if you will. There were some comments received from staff about crossing guard comments and how that is a bit unpredictable, and by narrowing the lanes and less the front car is turning, everybody else is going to have to wait, so that is another reasonable consideration for improvement. All right, so that brings us to the end of my prepared materials, but I'd be glad to answer any questions or do some additional follow-up answers necessary.
I've got a quick question, Don. Possible improvement would be phased left turns, north-south. What about east-west?
Yep, so we did look at east-west phasing as well. The crash that did occur would have been mitigated if the north-south left turn phasing was in place, because that's the leg that the conflict occurred on. You do see that westbound left turn go to level of service E, you know, over 55 seconds of delay. Neither direction meet the state DOT requirements for installation of the dedicated left turn phasing. However, given the community concerns and the resulting analysis that shows reasonable impacts, we felt that it was reasonable to consider the north-south. I don't have the combined mitigated impacts of both north-south and east-west available, but it's something I could gather if you would like.
Connected to that, is there any impact as far as adding a no turn on red sign to what that queue length would be, so we know the impact of the left turn signal, but what about no turn on red?
Yep, I don't have it, it wasn't included in the report. From an analysis standpoint, we did update the model just briefly before our presentation and found, I don't have the exact specifics, but it was reasonable as far as it relates to the queue lengths, and I can follow up more specifics on that.
Great, thank you. And I just have one comment, it's not necessarily a question, but I noticed in some municipalities, they have audible pedestrian crossing signals, so it's good for accessibility for those with disabilities. Also, as a driver, I know if my windows are down, it catches my attention when I hear that, so I'm just wondering, has there been any impact as far as safety when it comes to using those?
Yeah, the audible technology continues to become more commonplace in the industry. It is not a standard to be installed at every intersection, that's both, you know, moving forward. They are often used when we know we have certain users that would significantly benefit from that technology. So, the first one that I put in was right next to the Association for the Blind on Cherry Street in Grand Rapids, right, a very applicable location. We also installed them on Michigan Street by the hospitals, probably, you know, six or eight years later, but they're still used fairly sparingly, because they also have a bit of a nuisance to them. They do chirp, they are loud, and in residential areas in particular, we can get complaints, and so it is a bit of a balance between accessibility and quality of life.
Yeah, I, under the potential improvements, the traffic signal box span. I, under the potential improvements, the traffic signal box span, I understand it to be around two-hundred-and-fifty K. The implementation of a north-south turn, what's the cost of that?
Yeah, that's much more affordable. I haven't, I haven't say that's probably closer to thirty to fifty thousand, depending on if the cabinet can accept the additional load phases without replacing the cabinet.
Okay. And then the rest of the improvements are minimal in cost?
Relatively.
As I can see.
Depending on how you potentially remove that additional wedge. If you do it with pavement markings, it's fairly cheap. If you were to do it with concrete, you know, it's a bit more expensive.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the class?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I think since this accident occurred, there's already been an adjustment made to the signaling for the pedestrian crossings. Is that correct? Where there's a delay in the green light during, like, the signal changes for the pedestrian across before the green light changes? Is that correct?
I do believe so.
And we see that downtown as well.
Leading pedestrian interval, correct, calls up the walk phase so that the pedestrian can get out into the crosswalk to be more visible. And correct, that is what downtown Grand Rapids uses routinely in high pedestrian areas.
Okay. I think that was changed, it's been changed too, isn't it, the last few months?
I think it's been on in a few months.
Since that accident?
I think it's been longer than that, for the last few years.
I just noticed it more recently, but not in the pedestrian area.
It's been a while.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. I just noticed that, and I think that's one thing that is easy to do that gives the pedestrian a lead, you know, to the intersection before the car's at the right to turn or to proceed through. Wondering about the left turn signals. I appreciate all the information. The study was very thorough, obviously. It's surprising to see that the level of service at the intersection actually declines with adding the left turn signal in all directions. I was surprised to see that. But I'm wondering, is it possible to do the left turn just at peak hours? Or would it have to be throughout the entire day? Or how is that factored into the mitigation? Is it considering it's on all the time or just at certain peak hours?
Yep. So maybe I just address the first part of that. By adding additional phases to the intersection, you end up with more lost time. The yellow and all red phases take away time from throughput for the intersection. So the more phases you have...
Takes longer to go through them?
Correct, right. Because you have that time to switch between phases. Operating the signal, you're gonna wanna do it in a very consistent way. But there are time-based operations, and it also depends on how you set up the signal heads. Typically, the standard now is to use a dedicated signal head with three or four signals, with your flashing yellow arrow allowing the permissive versus the green arrow. The phase, skipping the phase would... The benefit that we're looking to achieve of not conflicting turning vehicles with the pedestrians is lost when you're not operating that phase. So if we only wanted to operate the dedicated phase during, you know, the peak hours or school hours or something like that, that is possible. It would, if we go to a permissive only flight phase, it would allow, it'd be the flashing yellow, and then it would go to the solid red ball, right? The green arrow would never come up. And so there's a little bit of a learning curve with the community, but yes, the answer to your question is that it is possible.
Yeah. I kinda like the idea of doing signage too. That seems like an easy thing to do is to move around red. But I think it would make sense that, say, when there's pedestrians present, because quite often you approach that intersection at various times of the day and there's nobody there. So it seems like it would make sense if pedestrians are present and they're not all the time, to me.
It does make it more difficult to enforce. You know, but yeah, I think it gets the message across, right? Look for pedestrians. It's another tool, stop, observe.
And can be based on time as well, you just stay there.
Correct.
Kinda like the little left turn at Chicago Drive Thirty-six that people discuss during the parking lot for other businesses.
Well, there's a lot here. It's good to get all the report in front of you. Thanks, Chris, for making the presentation tonight. We've been eager to hear it. There's a lot of pieces to this that you need to be thinking about. Obviously, pedestrian safety and the statistics that Chris shared are sobering. And we wanna do what we can to approach zero traffic, that's what I think, yeah. We're not to the point where we've got a project. We don't, you know, we've got a rough cost estimate for Chris here with the box span. And the question was asked about something other than that. This is obviously some fairly significant stuff that's gonna result in a need to fund. And that means conversation with budgeting as well. It's also something that can't necessarily be accomplished quickly. It's gonna be in a corrected rush because of the time of year. Signal changes, yes, as far as timing goes, but changing, you know, heads and poles and all that kind of thing is a much bigger deal. And I think the council needs to recognize that this is gonna be, assuming that it moves forward, this is gonna be a change that will be noticeable. The level of service changes. It's not necessarily changing except in one case, which I think was, was an eastbound lot. Westbound lot, that's right. To a level of service E. And that, that level of service can trigger driver reaction. But even in the other cases, A's become B's and B's become C's. So people are gonna notice that this is, you know, different out there. And in particular, I think if you've got a dedicated left turn phase that's part of the signal operation and you've got along history of people being able to make a left when there's no traffic on a green light, but they can't, I just want you to be prepared that those kinds of things do generate complaints. You know, I can't get through your intersection in Granville because you changed this rule. It doesn't mean this is not appropriate, but you just need to be aware of all the potential reactions here. We did have a brief conversation. I'm gonna ask Chief Anglom to weigh in on a question the Councilman Maringa just asked about no turn on red when pedestrians are present.
Like Chris said, too, when you add that sign, it's a lot harder to enforce. I know that when the city of Wyoming put them out several years ago, at least at that point, that was not a state-approved traffic control sign. I'm not sure if that's changed or not. And like you said, too, it needs to be consistent if you're gonna be training in the more public. So my view would be either it is allowed or it's not. It would be the safest way for the pedestrian traffic. And the other thing, especially with the current setup and people trying to go right on red heading eastbound, everybody's looking to the left. You know, they might have scanned right when they started. But it's again, if we're looking to increase pedestrian safety, just prohibiting that movement would be best.
It takes a decision out of the driver's hands, especially when it's a confusing intersection. If you wind up with a lot of activity, fire trucks, school kids, crossing guards, all that kind of thing, so. Yeah. One word to add, I wanted to get out there. And that was with regards to the impact of the extra wide, I guess I'll call it. There's not a little turn lane there. Right, right, right turns coming eastbound as you approach the intersection. The drawing here shows pavement markings. You know, the city hall being on the corner, we've got a front road seat at this intersection all the time. And we've had a lot of particular, in particular, truck contact with pedestrian signals out there. And so I, I think, and I wanna talk to Charlie a little bit more about this, but I hesitate to restrict the curb and make it harder to make turns around that corner. I think the pavement markings might be a little bit better way to go because it will give up more space to make that turn. Pretty loud screech when a semi trailer pulls sixty feet of trailer along the head head there, so. So those are my thoughts. And the Councilman Maringa, the comment, I think we've got anyone to give a chance for the public. We've got several folks here tonight that have been here before on this topic. So I'll defer to Mr. Charlie.
Yeah, just a couple of quick part questions. So when you say level of service and you're kind of evaluating that, is that really mostly a factor of how long is the wait for the phasing to change then?
So level of service is exactly that, average delay per vehicle.
Okay. I'm wondering if you did any modeling with, like, improvement in, how do I say this? So if there was a dedicated left turn, like, right now, currently, with there not being a dedicated left turn, quite often you must wait for multiple phases of the light to change if you're turning left going north or southbound at rush hour. I'm wondering if you have done any modeling or have any, anything that shows how likely cars are to get through that intersection on a left turn signal if they're there versus when there's not? Because I know, I mean, I come that way every single day on the way home. And quite often, you have to wait for a couple of signals to be able to make a left-hand turn on the prairie going southbound. Just wondering if there's been any way of studying how effective that left turn is, even if everybody else has to wait a little bit longer, how likely are you to be able to clear the intersection?
So doing the modeling to determine the length of the phases, the way in which that that is usually structured is to clear the queue during that phase. So the length of the left turn phase clears the queue routinely. So maybe you're a late arrival to the queue and you might not make it through. But if you're there stopped and waiting, you're gonna get through on that phase.
Okay. Because to me, I guess that would be an improvement of a level of service, actually. But I guess it depends on which direction you're coming from, if that's your perspective or not. I know that that's probably the cause of some of these accidents, or that would be my guess, is that, I mean, at certain times of day, it's very difficult to make a left turn there without turning through yellow.
Yes.
Because otherwise, you have to wait until the next light and then there's cars stacked up in the opposite direction. So I'm sure you're not the only one that has that issue. But I mean, routinely, you're going through yellow because you're the first one in line, and that's the only way you're getting through. So that would be an improvement, in my opinion. That's why I asked about if it could be during certain hours? Because I mean, based on the numbers, it sounds like there's certain hours of the day that are more problematic than other, it's obviously because of the traffic patterns. But I'm just not sure if it would be helpful all day long or necessary all the time. Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
Yeah.
You know, this may be an unpopular opinion, but I'm curious what your thoughts are. I know we've dealt with the road diets and cycling lanes on Ivan Ross in Kennewa, particularly. What is the impact of potential cycling lanes at an intersection like this? Does that automatically, you know, green painted cycling lanes, does that slow down people's thought process? Does that, is that an impact? I know there's commuters, there's recreational cyclists that come through each way. You talk about that in the report about cyclist accidents across the state, across the country. Thoughts on that, implementing that to this intersection?
So I'm thinking about cycling infrastructure on Wilson in particular. In order to properly accomplish that, a dedicated lane would be likely recommended to be the appropriate way to go. In order to do that, we're either adding it somewhere, either adjacent to the sidewalk or even in the roadbed, and that potentially comes at the expense of some of the travel lanes. So if we were to remove a through-vehicle lane and add a bike facility, at twelve thousand vehicles a day, that's within a reasonable road diet limit. But we do know that during peak times, it's already experiencing some significant traffic challenges. Those queues would be twice as long, and then the level of service would be significantly impacted. So if we were to remove travel lanes, vehicle travel lanes in favor of bike travel lanes, we're obviously gonna have a significant capacity impact. The green paint is often used for conflict areas in awareness or advancing the bike to, say, make a left turn so that they make their way out in front of vehicles. But that's always associated with an existing bike, dedicated bike facility. So that would be potentially part of the design, but not the motivating factor for awareness.
In the last month, I've visited California, Texas, and Florida. Here, we're really lucky that there's shortness of our lights. I mean, we're really lucky. It's atrocious everywhere else. I'm all in favor of slowing down the intersection at whatever means possible. I think we gotta talk about cost, we gotta talk about that sort of thing. But we need to slow it down. And I'm just trying to think outside the box here, aside from anything, whatever. But we are lucky that we, our lights do move pretty quickly comparatively across the country. So slowing it down would be the worst thing for it.
One note of caution, because we interact with the freeway, we need to make sure that we're not queuing cars back up on the freeway. So that might be one of the controlling factors.
Council, any other questions, comments?
Just real quick, and that is, I'm glad that Ken brought up letting some of those in the audience speak because I would like to hear from those who process, you know, this is level of service for vehicles, which is an important consideration. There's also a level of service for pedestrians, which is another important consideration. And I was thinking, picturing myself at that intersection, I almost need a no turn on, no right turn on green because it's really, your light turns green is when people want to hold up. But that's when you have the crossing guard starting to walk. So I'm wondering from their perspective, this no turn on red. Red might be the only time that some people are actually turning right because as soon as the light turns green, you have pedestrians walking during the peak hours of school. So I'd just like to hear some of that.
Great segue after the invitation to... Anybody, any of our, come on up to the podium so we can hear you then? Yeah, thanks.
Jody Masick, first, thirty-four, twenty-nine, Prairie. I have a couple of questions, actually. First question I have is, do any of these improvements, potential improvements, address the city buses that are turning from Wilson to eastbound Prairie? Those buses can't make that right-hand turn. Thus goes in, like, anybody who's in the left turn lane going westbound, you actually have to back up in that intersection if a bus potentially comes and got to video somebody behind you. It's just a joke. But I'm wondering if, I know that there was no discussion really of an east-westbound, like, on Prairie turn light. But I'm wondering if there was one, like, setback further, if that would allow for there to be room for buses without people having to creep up in order to make that turn quicker? So that's why there isn't that space for those buses, because you have to kind of go when you can. So there isn't an opportunity to turn, especially during those pedestrian times. And if you haven't experienced that city bus situation, please, go, sit in that left-hand turn light sometime. It's a real treat. And to be a pedestrian as well at that same intersection, that bus jumps that curb constantly. So as a mom of kids who walk to school, that's always terrifying because those buses are so, I mean, they don't, they obviously will sit there and wait and they'll try and do their part, but they're also on a schedule and they, they come close every time. And to your note about school times, around three-thirty to four-thirty as opposed to four-thirty to five-thirty, I know that traffic, people are choosing alternate routes. But that alternate route tends to be more of a residential area. So they're gonna turn down, what is that, First Street, Ottawa? And then go down Henry or that Second Street, so, right? So then we're just putting a risk somewhere else. It's just maybe not at that intersection, but people are then speeding because they don't wanna sit and wait for five lights to turn left. Because that's what it is. It's usually can get one, one car turn here and left at the time. So I just wanted to kind of address those things and see if those things had been thought out, especially the city bus situation, because that wasn't even talked about or noted or anything like that. And they are frequent, especially going down Prairie. And now that they make that stop by the library as well, I think that definitely needs to be noted. And to Joshua's point, yes, it may decrease, or increase the amount of time you're there if you're going, if you were to be going eastbound, westbound. But not if you're the person who's turning. When you're turning, you're sitting there through three, four, five, six lights during those peak hours. So I just wanted to make that a point.
Good. Appreciate the comments. I see we got both engineers are big adults. Yeah, that's, thank you.
Yeah. Nick Brock, thirty-nine, fifty-nine, Henry Street. Thanks again for, you know, taking this seriously into consideration. And thanks for the engineer for explaining it all. As I was looking over the information, my general understanding is that if any of these things were to be added, these are, like, these are mitigation, so it would... these are, like, these are mitigations, so it would increase the time that any vehicle is at the intersection. So to, to your point earlier, so I live on Henry Street, as does Brett Havercorn, and with any of these implementations, what's happening already is that traffic is making, they found a loophole. When it, when they, you know, are at the intersection, they can just cut through Henry going exactly east and they'll go through Vermont, or up, is it Vermont?
Shoot-up Ottawa.
Shoot-up Ottawa, and then they'll go right over to prairie. So these things, while good in slowing the traffic, I just want to put it on your table, like, to look ahead a little bit. Like, I see that, these cars going down Henry as being a problem, and then, well, then we'll have to address that situation. So you got not only this, but a couple of things. So that was just my comment there, and, you know, with, we have a lot of younger families on Henry and just in that neighborhood, so that's just, you know, a greater concern for us and those who live on there. Thanks.
Thanks for the comments. Anybody else? What's the rest of the council on there? So the engineers taking more notes, so good, good comments. Thank you. Yes, yes.
David Marshall, 3708 Omaha Street. I'm one of the three crossing guards that work for you, and I just expressed my biggest concern, safety-wise, would be the no right on red. If that can be implemented, I think it'd be a goal long ways towards increasing the safety for pedestrians. There's two of the corners out there that are almost blind when you're, or drivers that are turning right on red. And you did get it right, it's with the right on red, probably eastbound prairie, turning right on southbound Wilson. You know, it's, it's just hard to see for drivers. They have to creep out into that crosswalk area before they can get enough visibility to their left, and by the time they do it, see an open spot, then they're, the light may have already turned green for them. They don't realize it and slows the crosswalk. So that's one of my, just trying to add my input for what, in my opinion, improves the safety for pedestrians. The left turn light, probably a good thing, but I, I don't know if that improves the safety of pedestrians, but it might for the drivers. But, because I've been out there, I have observational time that I've spent there. I'm one of the three, and I think that we've all, the three of us have all observed the same things. There's a lot of close calls, people that wait underneath the light, the light will turn, they'll miss their, light will turn red, and then they'll, you can tell they're nervous, and then turn when the other, after the light's already turned. I guess my last point would be, whatever decisions that you make for improving the pedestrians' safety and walkability, it's consistent with the other things that you've done and we've done here in Granville that I think have been good things, like the downtown Chicago drive. It's, when I, that went in, I was not a fan. I thought that would be the end of our downtown, that it would, I was wanting the opposite. But it's been an improvement to downtown. The other bike lanes that we put in on Ivan Rest and on Canal, they've been good things. And I think this just fits in that same category of improvements that we can make to make Granville more pedestrian-friendly and safe. Thank you.
Appreciate the comments. Thanks for being here tonight, and God bless you for being out there in the cold and keeping the kids safe. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Anything else? We've got, thank you very much for the presentation, thank you everybody for the comments. Different perspectives, all very good, received a lot of notes from the agents. Counsel for their questions, and we will.
One thing I want to do is just make sure, Tim, as our city civil engineer, is there any you want to share? You're welcome to, but you don't feel like you have to.
Yeah, no, I think, I think you and Chris kind of covered everything, so, yeah. I'm in agreement with those thoughts.
Maybe just one, as long as it came up before we lose you guys out of the room. As far as the setback of the westbound left to allow room for larger vehicles, it's not just buses. I think I've seen drivers' trucks struggle and that kind of thing too. Does that sound like something that's?
Yeah, yeah, I think if we were to put, especially if we were to reconfigure and put a box span in there, I think that's something that we would be looking at, because there's, there's a lot of overhead utilities there. There's a fire hydrant right there. While, while they were talking, I was looking at the area of the intersection. You can see where those, you know, where those tire marks are going, going around over the curb there. So I think that's something that would, you know, we would look at a little closer. If we were going to be doing, particularly if we're going to be, you know, updating that signal with a big project like that, is there a way to, you know, shift that curb a little bit? Is there, you know, does, does not fire back 10 feet, does that provide adequate room? Or is it, you know, does it, does it need to go back further where, you know, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't work? So I think that's when we'd address that.
Okay.
But it definitely should be looked at as, you know, as we're choosing some of the mitigations.
Well, thank you. I think a lot of information here, appreciably input from the engineers and the public. Crossing guard, it's great to have that firsthand knowledge as well. So I think we've got the makings of a project here, council chooses to go that route. There'll be some options about what's included, what's not included as we go, but we'll need to work on that and get back to council and get that submitted through our process, fortunately with the very beginning of another budget cycle. So our staff is already starting to put together projects for '24, '25 fiscal year, and we'll be doing that over the next couple of months heading towards your council review, and that will be in March to May timeframe, so pretty timely information. I haven't picked up any council comments or question, or even public comments or questions that seems to be putting the brakes on in any way, so I think we will continue to look at, is there, I think as Chris said, it may not be specifically warranted by the numbers out there, but the mitigation does address issues out there, and even more so, some of the ones that came up today as well. So we'll work on that as staff and be back with council in the context of budgeting, that we're going to go with this for next year.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the attempt under ordinances and resolutions, a couple zoning issues. First one is a rezoning that we talked about a couple weeks ago. Resoning from R1 C Residential to C3 Commercial, which matches an adjacent property. So is there a motion to remove from the table, proposed zoning ordinance 23-002? Support, motion, support, in discussion? All those in favor of removing from the table, please say yes. If you have any opposition, please say no. But you have any questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-002? Motion?
Support.
Support. Any other discussion? We got a discussion last time, so, all right, motion and support. Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Norca?
Yes.
Steve Strah?
Yes.
Truft?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yonderless?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes. Next is ordinance number 23-002. That, remember, that's adding two family homes.
Two of the three.
I'm sorry. Is there a motion to remove that from the table? So. Motion?
Support.
And support. In discussion? All those in favor of removing from the table, please say yes. If you have any opposition, please say no. And are there any questions or comments about this ordinance? We looked at it a couple weeks ago as well, JR described it as well. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-003? So. Motion?
Support.
And support. Any other questions? Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Steve Strah?
Yes.
Truft?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yonderless?
Yes.
Maryka?
Yes.
Norca?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Yes.
Next item is the consent agenda.
We have a number of December reports from police, investment, fire EMS, also the minutes from the January meetings for the planning commission and the DDA, and also the MDOT performance resolution. And I believe there's a check on that as well, or a copy of it. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Motion? Support and support. Discussion, anything, any items that somebody would like to discuss in particular? If not, all of us in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say yes. Yes, if you have any opposition, please say no. Again, city managers report, city manager, executive search consultant.
Two weeks ago, the city council had a conversation where they discussed five different proposals that had been received by the city, a party that's interested in performing the upcoming executive search for a new city manager. And council had some questions they wanted to pose to some of those entities, and so you appointed a subcommittee that included Mayor Moss and Mayor Proton Vanderwaal and Councilman Steve Strah, they met twice last week and conducted interviews of those entities and came back with a recommendation to the full city council to engage the Michigan municipally as the consultant for this search. The representative involved for the lead would be Curtis Holt. He was the party that was interviewed, and you know his name, because he was a long-time city manager in Wyoming that retired about the same timeframe, I think, as the left leader last year. So the proposals, I'll recop it into your packet so you can see the details of that specific one, and I'm going to let the folks in the subcommittee indicate anything they wish to about the recommendation. The request tonight would be for the council to authorize the city to enter into this agreement as proposed on the MML's RFP to perform these services starting right away.
Like I mentioned, JR, Tim and I met with, all had two in-person, one on a Zoom call, and I think we agreed all of them would, could do a really fine job. And I'll open it up for these guys to make comments too, but my, as I was thinking about it, you know, the MML is much less costly than the other ones, but that really was not, it was a factor, but it's certainly not, in my mind, the determining factor. I think it was the person assigned to us, I think, really understands the area, so. Anyway, costly is not, in my mind, the determining factor. Tim, JR?
Sure. Gov HR is a big company. They've got 36 recruiters and huge sports staff across the country. Baker Chili's a smaller company with five recruiters and sports staff across the country. We're familiar with MML. A lot of us have gone to conferences, done educational work through them. The three services all operate pretty much the same. They have name banks, people looking to change jobs. They advertise, add to that bank, we interview. They gave us some tips, all of them, similar tips on what we need to do to attract candidates. And, you know, as Steve said, to me, the difference was Curtis Holt. His 23 years as manager in the city of Wyoming, part of Metro Six, knows Granville. He's a huge people person. I think the difference, having Curtis Holt working for us, is he's going to actively go out and recruit people that he believes are good fit for Granville. And that's what directed me to go for MML.
Yeah?
Yeah, you know, I was looking over my notes this evening, and a lot of the same comments that Tim had, a lot of great suggestions. Broadening our range for salary, looking creatively at who's a replacement. Is it a seasoned person, is it a young person, is it a diverse person? One thing that all three commented on, that I think we missed the mark on last time, was having staff involved. Or at least the conversation may not be a part of the interview process, I mean, it's still an interview process, but involving staff departments, and I think we missed the mark on that. I think that was actually Tim's comment, he said, in this process, I think we missed that as a piece of. But again, I'll be honest with you, Curtis was dropping so many names that I was annoyed by it. I'll be honest with you, I was, I was initially turned off, like, how many people he knew and the names he was throwing around. And it's me, it's like, well, you know, your sister Jerry, or, you know, and she knows the neighbor, oh, you know her, she goes to church with someone. Like, I can't handle this. But I think what, when I took a step back, I realized that he's so well-connected in this community that I think he's going to be our best advocate for it. I really like Ryan Cotton, he does live in Gran Haven, but I don't think he has a great pulse, a great argument as well as Curtis. That's why I look for some issue in this board as well.
Justin?
Yeah, so just two questions. My first one is on the placement guarantee. Was there any clarity on that as far as this is a, you know, you already used your warranty or whatever, or is there any guarantee if this, for some reason, didn't work out?
We didn't discuss it, I, I don't think. And I didn't feel like he had the authority to say whether that's a guarantee.
About his parents.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, Councilmember Steve Strah alluded to this. But is there any discussion, and I recognize Curtis wasn't the person who did it, so I'm not holding him accountable, but how it would be different this time, other than it's him, so that's already, you know, an improvement because of his connections? But any other feedback from him as far as, you mentioned that the staff would be included, but was there some obvious reflection by MML in his responses that, yeah, this didn't go as well as we hoped and this is what I think we would do differently?
He did, he did say that he was going, for example, to a meeting next week, I think, of city managers, and he would do active recruiting, whereas he felt that the previous time we received a listing of people looking to change jobs.
Rather than active recruiting.
Yeah, it's next week.
I think too, Justin, I think I learned a lot, personally.
Yeah, for sure.
In the last process, so I think my part is going to be the better.
You know, I will say too, with the fucking dollars and cents, I do know that Gov HR did say, because of our substantial profile that we've already established, that the fees could be adjusted, which weren't discussed to numbers, but that was a concern, anybody, I just want to say it out loud, that they said it would be, right? Is that, that he would, the numbers could, scale could slide, so, in case it would feel strongly otherwise.
But, you know, like, like these, these guys said, everyone, we learned something from, from them. I mean, even some good comments about things that we take for granted that actually we made grand on that traffic area. That was good to hear and something that maybe we'll have, kind of a low drumming, certainly, which is good. You know, I mean, not. Not all places are like that, anyway.
I was just going to say, thanks to the three of you for putting in the time to do the interviews, and I appreciate that you've done white work for us and appreciate the recommendation. But I would agree with Justin, I've been wondering if we could go back and ask that they put that warranty clause back into the agreement like they had previously. It seems like there'd be a small likelihood that that would be needed a second time, but I think it would be helpful just to have that in there. I don't know if anybody else feels about it, but it was there the first time, I don't see why it shouldn't be a second time.
I think that's a great idea. Mr. Olvis here, he didn't seem like he was talking about.
Mr. Holt was here, he, he didn't seem like he was talking about, uh, when, once they decided, the agreement, it was, here's your I O and Y, so... Sure, so I think we need some clarification from...
Yes, yes, uh, presentation, this would be his first time, in fact, he's working a little bit with, um, the person who helped us last time, and, uh, there's a lot of unbuilding that person, too. It's just, it was clear to us that the process with Curtis is gonna be different. It's, it's not as focused on the, the process as much as it's focused on finding the right person. And I, I feel he wants the city of Granville excellent, and he knows, and, and what we've had here for the last six, eight decades, and, uh, so, you know, I think he's got, he's gonna do us real well. I was excited, just as he started, as, as much as JR wasn't, I was excited as he started throwing out names and, uh, people he was gonna talk to, and, and he's focused on that there is, um, good governance in Granville. It's, it's, it's a well-run council. Granville's a good place for family, it's a good fit for a lot of people. We just need to spend a little time on, on compensation range, and, uh, we can do that, but, um, there's, there's a smaller, it, it's, it's a small pond out there, and, uh, it's gonna help to have somebody who's known and knows others.
Oh, I don't like the answer advantage, I think you agreed to, uh... Any other comments, questions? My sense is that we would have a motion to engage MML, it would be contingent on a, the one-year guarantee.
Because it depends if it changes your mind whether it's not offered, would you, would you go a different direction? If you don't think you would, I'll, I'll ask a question, you give the answer, but if, if that answer makes a difference on whether you proceed with them or not, I guess then you know that now, from the order. That's, you know, I mean...
I'll actually make the motion that's contingent on them offering the guarantee. And I think, and I think if they say no, we push it to offer the guarantee.
Just a little trust, folks. I support the... Any other suggestions? Motion and support? Marcy, would you call the role?
I'll bring it, I'm sorry, just, um, there was a couple optional services that were offered there. We did not take them last time, and I didn't hear any mention of that from the subcommittee. If we're following this motion, I'm assuming it's the basic proposal without the optional
Is that just the services that are on page two?
Uh, it's on the bottom of page five, and on the bottom of page seven.
Okay, so that would be...
It's also in our spreadsheet.
People were...
Oh, yeah.
I guess my motion doesn't have to include the options.
I still support it.
Thank you for the clarification.
Motion and support? Any questions, comments? No, Marcy, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Truth?
Yes.
Vanderwaal?
Yes.
Yoderlos?
Yes.
Marya?
Yes.
Norca?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss?
Next item, Ken, under city managers' report, is Fourth of July celebration committee.
We carried the side over, um, council does all their appointments, reporting for boards and committees in December. Um, there was a little bit of carryover to the first meeting in January, uh, for, I think it was three of those bodies, to make sure we had all council members present. Um, there's one more that remains carryover, because, uh, we've been unsuccessful in recruiting a sufficient number of people for that committee. Um, that is the Fourth of July celebration committee. Um, we currently have four vacancies on that body, um, and despite advertising it in every social media, we can think of posting it, saying, well, council members actively recruiting, uh, we have, um, only one active application. We had one withdrawal since the last meeting for, um, schedule conflict issues, so, um, council can go where they wish to on this, but at this point, we're already behind with regard to Fourth of July planning. Uh, we do now have our part-time seasonal coordinator for that, Ben on board. She's gotten a good start, and, uh, seems to be her role. I, I, if my suggestion would be, since we can't even appoint enough to get to a quorum with the names that we have, um, just holding on this one. I, I think between the, um, staff that we have in various departments, police, public works, fire, clerk's office, um, between, um, recent years, chairman of various portions of the committee that are still out there and available, and sharing information on things like parade and arts and crafts, that our time may be better spent getting our coordinator going, and supporting her with the staff that we have and the contacts that we have, rather than spending a lot more time kicking this down the road, trying to recruit sufficient number of people to fill the committee to a, a quorum level. You can always come back to this, um, that we shouldn't necessarily stop recruiting because of it, um, but just that effort is, um, it's becoming quickly, um, a little bit of a moot point, because things have to happen, we just can't wait to fill the committee, and, um, even onboarding new people at this point is relatively difficult at the stage that we're at, and those of you who've been involved and look at council members, you know, kind of know what the rhythm of this thing is, so, um, I don't know where else we're gonna get folks that are willing to necessarily, um, commit, uh, Fourth of July, uh, activity. Hopefully, we can still find folks out there that are willing to do that, and we can revisit this, uh, and repopulate the committee, but we really don't wanna slow things down, it's, it's really at a critical phase, so, um, that's my two cents worth, and council can decide what, what you wish to do, um, but the event's still out there, the date on the calendar's not gonna change when it's gonna occur, and work has to be done.
Any, any thoughts on that suggestion? Great. Anything else, Ken?
I did put on your desk tonight a announcement that came out today, uh, the longtime executive director of the senior neighbors organization, which has a, uh, facility they use here in the city of Granville to serve Granville seniors, um, is retiring in March, and, um, they just sent the notice today of their selection of a new director. I don't know how many of you guys have had, uh, contact at that level with that organization, but just thought you might appreciate seeing who the new person coming on board in a couple of weeks is. She starts in February, and her, uh, name is Suzanne Callahan, uh, her background's on the information that's been provided by senior neighbors, so, other than that, Mr. Mayor, I'm good. What's on us?
Okay. To the chair, council member comments?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. One, uh, I think we're doing, trying to make things correct in certain areas, the zoning ordinance, uh, you know, just because of planning question, did one thing, doesn't mean that we can't reevaluate the council and move forward to make things the best for our residents, for our community. Same thing with Craig Wilson, I think we're doing the right thing moving forward. So I think that, uh, I would just commend us, and especially the public, too, for speaking up about these issues. The zoning ordinance wouldn't have been, um, I won't say reversed, but, um, adapted without public comment, so I'm, I'm grateful for that. Also, I guess I'd just like to end with some well wishes to some of our staff. Sounds like we have some prospective good news with Matt. Wish him well, and, uh, as well, pass on to Randy, too. Now, he's, uh, had some issues with expressing some health lately, so hopefully they'll bolt on the mend, and, uh, always good to see those faces around here. Thank you. Nothing to add, thanks.
No, and I, uh, to add to Chair, I'd also like to thank Chris for, uh, the report, uh, very comprehensive, uh, a lot to digest there, uh, but, uh, I think this is great that we're taking a close look at this, and it's good to have the professional help, uh, from, from progressive engineering, so thanks. And Mitch, thanks for your comments tonight, too. Always good to see you.
Justin?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo that. Thanks, Chris, for the report, very detailed. Thanks for answering my questions, and a very thorough analysis, I think, so...
Andy?
I was gonna say the same thing. You've presented us with a lot of options, and appreciate your hard work, and you've certainly given us a lot to think about, a lot of different approaches to it, intended, so, anyway, thank you.
My pleasure. I just have a couple quick comments, um, both of them deal with one of our guests, Kyle Boss. We had a nice breakfast last weekend with, uh, Kyle put together, uh, breakfast for the ten community foresters in Granville. Tim is one of those ten people who've gone to a certain number of places, some hands-on, so we had a nice time just getting to know each other better, and just strategizing about some, uh, fun, uh, cool projects. And also had kind of an informational meeting about another project that Kyle is working on, it's called the Food Forest, and you'll hear more about that, so, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
If you have any options, please say no. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Appreciate it.